I'd like to call me in order. It's my duty to inform you that prior to the meeting, we had executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues. Everybody please stand and see.
.......................................
We'll call Mrs. Carlson.
Mrs. Kozar, here. Mr. Laser.
Here.
Mr. Lassio.
Here.
Mrs. Mains.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Mr. Abardo.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. George.
Mr. Howser.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to open the microphone up to hearing of visitors, part one. This is where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak of anything that's on the agenda for the speaking. At the end of the meeting, we will have an opportunity to speak of anything internal concerning the school district.
Hi, my name is Greg Fue. I live 1143 Ridgeford Drive in Latrobe. About the budget. I have a question. I need answer, so you can follow me with where I'm going with this part. Our cash on hand right now, where are we sitting at?
Mr. Do you make your speech or your...
Well, I can't until I know that number.
If you have any questions...
I can't until I know that number. If you just tell me that number...
I don't know.
Is that over four million?
Huh?
Over four million? Somewhere around four million? Here's why I'm asking. In 2012, you guys had the meeting, found that LES aren't paying. And 2012, we had $2.2 million back. Now, I believe we're a little over $4 million, six years later. Every year, except one, we raise taxes to balance our budget. Now, how do we bank over $2 million, but we have to raise taxes every year but one to balance our budget? I guess that's why I need that figure, because I don't want to be speaking out of turn.
I don't have that ability.
I mean, how do we bank a couple million dollars? Because we can't balance budgets, and we raise taxes every year. That blows my mind. This year, there's no excuse that budget could have been balanced, at a $170,000 deficit. Sometimes I feel that you guys aren't looking for ways to save money as a school board. You know, I think there's ways out there, and, you know, a dollar here, a dollar there, and you start looking at it over time. It starts out not... And I know Susan, you said in the paper that you talk to people that don't mind little budget increases here and there. You know, I talked to a lady who lives by the hospital the other day. Her yearly income is $13,200, yearly, lives in a house, okay? Her income for years, less than one month of duty salary. Do you think she likes tax increase? She drains money out of her savings account every month to pay her bills, because she never thought she lived to be 94 years old. So she cannot get a job. The house across from Latrobe Steel had a car bomb roof for three years. Now it has straps holding guns up on the house. The lady who worked it, Mary Lee Baker, walked to work every day. Do you think she likes tax increases every year? There's so many people out there struggling so bad. And when we bank millions of dollars raising taxes, that's wrong. You guys need to take it seriously on the spot. Could the administration want one for that raise? How much does our administration want to cost us in raises this year to put into our budget? How many tons of thousands of dollars? Do any of the board members know? Do any of yous know the number of the amount of raises that the administrators got?
If you do say, Greg, if you were here last week, you went through the budget, you saw the $1 million.
I wasn't here last week.
Well, it's on my pro... Two weeks ago, it's on my problem.
Well, I'm sorry, I had to work to pay my taxes.
And I had to sit here every night and listen to this sort of shit.
So you're smart all the time.
Greg, I...
Listen, you don't relate to people. The average...
I don't relate.
... Thousands, okay? You guys don't relate. It's a shame the way you act.
The budget's online, you can see everything online, why not correct?
That's correct.
And last week's meeting, we went all... Right, but you go to balance it, just without tax increase, it'd be a little harder.
And you understood why we didn't.
But how did you bank $2 million when you needed tax increases every year to balance a budget? Answer that question. Is that bullshit?
No, you have $350 million worth of buildings here we have to take care of, and you have to have that money in there.
But how do you bank it if you haven't raised taxes? You couldn't balance your budgets. So how do you put money in the bank if you can't balance your budget?
How do we put money in the bank?
When you couldn't balance your budget without tax increases.
Some years they're flat, some years they go down, and some years they go up. But there's an average that you try and mend and mend and pay. So don't get into the position where you were in 2004, 2005, or 2006.
But bottom line, we banked $2 million raising taxes five to six years.
Greg, you were about to...
Well, I'm just, I mean, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayer.
I understand your part of it, too.
Okay, and this is circular logic what he's saying.
Anyone else? Seeing no one. Move for adoption of resolution number 240, approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, this is first of the court.
I recommend that you move along with resolution number 241. This is the approval of Lincoln Avenue parking agreement, for foundation and agreement with our school district.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. President. Kurt, why is it going to cost the school district to pave that area again ready for parking? Or is it ready right now?
I mean, we paid part of the LES budget. I'll have to figure as far as what it costs to pay that.
Okay. And tell me, how many parking stalls are going to be available?
Approximately around 35.
35, okay. When you get that cost, would you present that to the board?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
I recommend that you move along with resolution number 242. This is the approval of the liquid tax exemption to Westmoreland County Community College. This is a situation where there was one of many lots in the community college that hadn't been properly filed for exemption. They're asking for a two-year exemption. There were actually four years paid that probably shouldn't have. They're asking for exemption for '16 and '17.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
I think we need to report this to the board here.
Education planning, Mrs. Mains.
Yes, thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number 243 to approve the less than federal credit. Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Sure, sir, well, I'm going to bundle. There's a ton of resolutions that approve programs, agreements, and things that we do on a regular basis. And so I'd like to bundle numbers 244 through 253. Please look through it, if you have any questions, of course, we can pull them out and look at them. I'd like to comment on number 253, the last one. It's to approve an EF education first high school exchange program. This is new on the agenda from last week, and it must have brought us any other comments on it?
E F reached out to us about placing a foreign exchange student at our high school for the next school year, for the 2018-19 school year. School board policy says that before a foreign exchange student can be placed at the high school, you need to approve the foreign exchange program as a board to be an approved vendor, so to speak, and then money exchange is needed. So, because we do not have a meeting in July, I would like to have this approved this week, so that we can get the student enrolled in time for the 2018-19 school. We had a meeting in July, but we not have it, but we do not. This progress has been around for 50 years. They work in Southmoreland, living here, regional central town. We know how to recommend it.
Motion on floor, we have a second. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And I will move for adoption of resolution number 254 to approve the exchange student from the EF school that we just approved.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And then we'll move for adoption of resolution number 255 to approve tuition for the 2017-19 school year. Elementary tuition being $9,128 and 28 cents, and secondary tuition being $9,302.
Second.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And I move for adoption of resolution number 256 to approve tuition student for the 2018-19 school year, from Lincoln Road.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
The next curriculum committee meeting will be held on September 18, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. here in the CSC. The one that's listed that we already have this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Mains. Thank you. Finance. I'd like to move for adoption of resolution number 257, approval of the trade report. Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 258, approved payment of bills as listed.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 259. And that is approved for 2018-19, and it's a short removal, it passes listed. Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion?
Just one comment, I would be staying due to potential possible...
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments? Those in favor up?
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying.
We have one staying, and that passes. Move for adoption of resolution number 218, or 260, I'm sorry. Adoption of 2018-19 final operating budget.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. That motion reads as that the budget of the Grayville Trade School District, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, has proposed at the meeting on May 15, 2018, and subsequently approved for advertising, is hereby adopted as the annual budget of the Grayville Trade School District of Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019. Necessary revenue shall be provided for tax resolutions already enacted, together with the school tax and real estate, to be levied and assessed at this meeting. Total amount of the budget, including wages and benefits of all district employees, and other planned expenditures for 2018-19, is $56,66,709. All in favor?
Can we discuss this question?
Yeah, I do have this, I do have a question. Not part of this budget will be the sale, the entry of the elementary school at $450,000. And then also, and we talked about it, in August, we're going to see a refund in the healthcare consortium, am I correct?
We believe we will, fingers crossed.
Okay, fingers crossed, but to be quite honest.
So it's probably a free, I don't know, one month free.
Okay, that is not part of the budget?
No, the plan is to utilize that with capital improvements plans. As we talked about the finance committee, we will identify for future roof replacements, also to help to do additional technology, and to basically maintain your $180,000 capital assets, we have additional money.
Thank you, but it's not part of the budget?
Normally, what's included in the budget, that is correct, Mr. Porter, it's not included in the budget, because it's a one-time non-recurring revenue stream. So you would normally not include that in the budget, because if you do include that in the budget, it's going to balance or balance some sort of expenditure. But next year, that expenditure is going to be there, but that revenue is one time, you're not going to see it again. So we're going to have shortfall, so you would not include that in your general collective option.
Okay, if you could answer this question to me, 2017, did we receive a refund?
From the consortium? We did not.
Okay, and the refund that we're, that we are receiving this year, is this the first in a long time?
I'd probably say in several years, yes.
Okay, but we have, and it passed?
We have, and it passed, that's correct.
Okay, and this one record to show that we're probably going to have another 3/4 billion dollars, that it's going to be not part of our budget, but in our fund balance.
But just so you, again, just so the whole board understands, with just the two roofing projects that we're talking about, the one project's about $2.5 trillion, the other one is much larger than that. That is also not included in this budget adoption, okay? That's included in our capital budget. So what we have to do is we have to designate certain funds to cover those one-time costs, and we normally use one-time revenues to offset those costs. This $56 million budget is for normal annual recurring expenditures that we have, such as salaries and whatnot. So we try to offset this with recurring revenue streams, not one-time revenue streams.
Okay, and if we would receive more money than what we anticipated through the state in our budget process that's actually going on now, will we know that by September?
Well, I hope that we know that by the end of this month.
Good.
And what I would suggest that we would do with that is, as you well know, we're using over $600,000 of our fund balance to help to balance this budget, right? Because there are expenditures in there, and we've identified that we're going to use that fund balance. So if we get additional income from the state, we utilize less than that $600,000, which will more than hold much.
And we were using, using that for the, the lawn, am I correct?
That's correct, that's right.
And also for athletics and some other?
And some other equipment and some curriculum, correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Porter.
Any other questions on the motion?
Mrs. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. Laser?
Yes.
Mr. Lassio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mains?
Yes.
Is he absent, Mr. Abardo?
No.
Mr. Palmer? Dr. George is absent, Mr. Howser?
Yes.
That motion passes, 61. I move for adoption of resolution number 261, through adoption of 2018-19 miller's levy by the Grayville Trade School District, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, as per the purpose of providing revenue for the said school district for the ensuing fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019. A tax of $81.25 million is hereby laid, levied, and assessed upon each dollar of a set value for $81.25 per one thousand of a set value valuation of the property in said school district, upon which county taxes levy and assess. This miller's levy is hereby adopted this 29th day, June 2018.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions on the motion? And I will follow it to that.
Mrs. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. Laser?
Yes.
Mr. Lassio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mains?
Yes.
Mr. Abardo?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Howser?
Yes.
Six, that motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 262, authorizing 2018 homestead, farmstead exclusion as listed.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Move for adoption of resolution number 263, reenactment of the Act 5 of the Tax for 2018-19.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 264, reenactment of the capital taxes for 2018-19.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
That motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 265, through extension of section 125, cash benefit cap for 2018-19.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 266, through 2019 commercial real estate tax assessment deals program.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number 267, through gift grants and donations.
Second.
Motion on floor and second. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next finance committee meeting will be Wednesday, August 14, 2018, 5:00 p.m., in the senior high school library classroom. Facilities operation planning. I move for adoption of resolution number... All in for bill, I'm sorry. Sorry, guys, I didn't mean it.
It's a picture, Bill, I'm trying to update, and we have a presentation, but...
It's too dark, because, did you guys see back there? There's a light, and I don't know if you can turn off the lights.
I'll try that earlier.
They can't see.
That's okay.
No, is it all right?
I think so. I can see that. All right, so we're here to discuss the progress at the elementary school. This is work that was performed in May. We're usually here a little earlier in the month to talk about this, but we're here for the second meeting this month. So what you're seeing there is a shot from our live cam, and this one was actually taken at the end of May, because you would notice now that the scaffolding at that location is gone, and all of the CMU on the building, all of the brick, the stone, has been completed. The next picture that you see on the screen is the, is an area right off of the main entry. This is between the auditorium, I mean, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium. What we're showing here is that the roof in all these areas is 100% complete, and we're working on the roof above it, which by now in June, you'll know that that roof is the high one out front that is completely covered with the, with the raised panel roofing. Project summary, hopefully you can read this. Some of the, the stone and the brick, at this point in time, was 95%, like I said, that was the end of May. All of the stone and brick are complete on the building now. A little bit of brick being made inside the building as an architectural feature at our elevator in the gallery, and that brick will be finishing up within the next day or two. So all the mason will be headed off the site. In the force that he's had now will be reduced down to a few to take care of some stonework on some of the architectural details in the courtyard. You can also see on the bottom right, a picture of the casework that is in all of the classrooms in the two classroom rooms. All of that casework is installed. They're putting tops on it, putting finishing touches on it. So all of this work has been installed. Look, what you're seeing on the top left there is our central administrative, I'm sorry, that's the admin section of the building. And if you could make it up with the picture, you would notice that that is the roof panels for that. They have a machine come out onto the site and roll a 60-foot standing seam roof panel, so that you have... so that you have seamless roof there. And it was all flung up and you'll notice when you go by now, the gutters and the tation and the stop that are all on that location of the building as well. This bottom right corner looks like a tar pit, is a tar pit. We covered the insulation for the canopy, the circular canopy roof with the insulation and the felt paper. And then to avoid water getting through it before they could get back to the next day to put on the cap sheet, they flooded it with that black tar so that it was waterproof and protecting that front end of the building. That is currently completed, it has the termination bars and all the counter flashings were being installed as I left there today. And the interior picture you see to the left is of the courtyard behind the C S C. It's a totally different view now because the scaffolding there is done and... or is removed because the masonry is finished. And all of the pieces for the windows themselves and that huge arched opening there are installed with the aluminum doors. Getting ready to start the sidewalks in there of the teaching courtyard. To the left, I must have been thrilled with the pictures of the gymnasium translucent panels because I took another one there and put it on here. But it is kind of a nice look when you get to see it. So I'll put it on there for you to see. The top right picture obviously is our gallery. That's the main entryway at the Cedar Street entrance. So that is what you'll see when you walk in, you'll notice the triangular shaped pieces of metal on the walls are actually the beginnings of sound panels. And it will work to deflect sound and it'll have color to it. And it's gonna be, it'll be really beautiful. It's right above the art hanging equipment that you'll have on the wall there so you can play all of your students' artwork or banners or whatever you want to. So you'll be able to bring a lot of color into that. And the bottom right picture was the elevator. This, that's a...
So the elevator is in, actually?
The elevator is in place already. And it's on schedule for the... in inspection by the fabric industry. So what you see here is, the top picture is preparation back in early May for pouring the concrete floor in the gymnasium. And the bottom picture is the finished product. And that finished product today is even further advanced. Today, we painted ninety-five percent of the ceiling in the gymnasium. The walls in the gym have fifty percent of the second coat of block filler. The two coats of block filler on the C M U gives it a nice base for the prime... for the finish coat. And that's the finished product of the concrete subfloor, the gymnasium bits of gym wood floor. These are the submittals, as you can tell, it's dribbling now down to very little. I think we have, our last submittal was submitted today. And it was something that needed to be corrected by the contractor and he wanted to make sure that he got it all right. So we're gonna have... That submittal is already submitted and the final hang, it'll be well within the dates down there on the right-hand side where he can turn it over and the contractor can have the material expedited to the site. These are R F Is. As you can see, at the very beginning of the project, back in, you know, the early January, February, March, those were, were the R F Is asked at bid time. So we gave the contractor the drawings in January, February, six weeks later, which is a long period for a contractor to get to review the drawings to prepare his bid. They got those done and now you can see where we've only been asked for a few a month. And most of them are, "Are you sure you want blue?" "Yes, we want blue." This is our schedule. We have the contractors working towards this schedule. This schedule puts us in the building in August. And so far, everybody's agreed to work to this schedule. And that's where we're at with the progress in the building. If you'll see what I've done for the contractor each week, I make the highlight of the yellow. That's this week's anticipated work so that they can pick up what they're supposed to be working on at the current time. And it spreads for the whole week so that you can see what's supposed to start that week and what they're supposed to be addressing. These are financials, and if I could see that today, it would be great. But what you can still see from this is that we still have money being held in under the change orders that were still under the actual, we haven't had any positive change orders enough to change the level to the positive mark for the entire project. Do I think that'll stay red forever? No. I think it will probably turn to black, but we're probably gonna be under a half a percent by the time this whole thing's done. Thank you. Any questions? Thanks very much.
Can I ask a question, of course?
Fine.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
But I see that it's now... They asked me, "Is this project going to be complete and the students in the building on time?" And my response, and I want to make sure that I'm accurate on this, is that we have not received any notification by any contractors that we would not be on time. However, I also stated that there's a lot of work to be done. Is that an accurate statement?
That's very accurate.
Okay.
And what that schedule showed was contractors working whatever time it takes to get it done. That was actually like sixteen hours a day. We'll make the building available to them. They can come in and do whatever they need to do. But we have not had a contractor yet tell us that they weren't going to make it.
More information to be had on this topic.
Correct. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Can I?
Can I?
I move for adoption of resolution number two sixty-eight to approve new L E S contract modifications as listed. Motion on floor and second, questions on motion?
Yes, up to this date, actually we're adding twenty-seven hundred dollars, eleven thousand dollars, almost twelve thousand dollars. Are we still under budget?
Overall budget, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. This will take us to roughly about seventy-two thousand dollars in the deep up, probably towards us.
Thank you.
Any other questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number two sixty-nine, approve renewal of the energy management system service contract with Pausenrath. Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes. I move for adoption of resolution number two seventy, renew of the elevator service contract of Eastern Elevator Service and Sales Company.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
Trouser. Both these contracts remain unchanged from last...
Thanks, George. Next facilities operation planning committee meeting to be determined. Student activities recreation, Miss Mayes?
No reports, same name.
Thanks, Miss Mayes. Communication relations, talk to the board. Mrs. Cozart, you want to take that?
Sure. I move for the adoption of resolution number two seventy-one to approve the eighteen nineteen free reduced price meal policy.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two seventy-two to approve the eighteen nineteen national school breakfast program.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
And I move for the adoption of resolution number two seventy-three to approve the eighteen nineteen national school lunch program.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
And the next, the LaPreve's regular school district department commission meeting will be Thursday, June twenty-first at four thirty P M. for the program in this school building.
Thank you. What's going on in the meeting, get it? Yeah, it's all Miss Mayes.
Thank you. The next W I D committee meeting will be held on next Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, seven P M.
Thank you, Miss Mayes. E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Palmer, could you please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, we have a J O C meeting at the school Wednesday, June twenty-seventh, at seven P M.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I ask you a couple of questions. Thank you very much. You know, you have probably a half dozen clients since I've been here for seven months on the board have brought up the poor condition of the... Westmoreland, or the eastern Westmoreland. Okay. Have you been, or have you had discussions with your board about... Many, many. Throw something out there. And I know that the very pro probably gives the most money than Perry and also over there. So in a way, we're gonna have to lead the way if we're gonna make renovations to the building. We just sold the L E S school for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Why couldn't we put that into a capital fund bank? And help fund or to revamp the technology center? I'm not sure what the finances part might be about the net. I am just, I'm thinking outside the box, I'm putting it out there because it's essentially not cash dollars. It's essentially money that's coming to our school district through the south of the building. But I think we need to have discussions on what we're gonna do. And on the reasons, and I think I want to put the emphasis on the technology center because every day I hear that we have a lack of skilled labor, not only in Western Pennsylvania, but also Pennsylvania. You know, we have put committee for hours on the board and emphasis on sports. Why don't we turn it down to technology? And I think this would be a great place to start. No, we don't do any. But I think the greater approach school district should be the leader. And I think we need to do something now. And I have another question. The technology part of the center, is it up to date? No, it's not. Okay. We have a problem. And if we keep kicking the can down the road, it does not... I think where we are right now, to answer your question, is the box between the three sending schools are underway. Okay. They, as part of it, I don't know exactly how the charter works and what the agreement between the three sending schools, but there has to be a generalized agreement as to what we're doing, how we're gonna do it all at the moment, like we're over. And we've been having serious discussions about that at the J O C. I think it's coming to fruition now where the other sending schools understand the same position we are that if something has to be done to get more students interested in the school and interested in the programs and keep those programs where they need to be and add programs, right? So a lot of kids are very bright, everybody who graduates, when they graduate, they get their right certificates, they have jobs, most of them, you know, working soon they come out of school, they're doing real well. And we do a good job on it with what we have. But I think between the three sending schools, we have to come up with a plan. That's what we're working on now. We're talking to, talking about hiring an independent engineer or architect, that could work for itself. And then we have the technology piece, it has to be in the second. So those discussions are moving on pretty good. I think that probably sometime next year, we'll finalize the plan and start the planning that we have to do to raise the funds and how we're gonna raise the funds. What the dollars are gonna be, that would be, and then start to raise those funds if you're done. Well, I know you're very passionate. As you are. About the center, and I really appreciate that. But I think that in a way, I think that's outside the box and we talk about some of the money that's actually coming into the school district. And it's not that's all. I understand that, that we could put it to good use. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
We're all signed, Ms. Mayes?
Thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number two hundred and seventy-four to approve listed board office. Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes. Thank you, Miss Mayes. Acknowledged, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met the senior panel, our junior, the most of the impact to your agenda at next conference meeting. And we have a case to be determined yet. Thank you, Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent recommendations, Mrs. Flader?
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two seventy-five, which gives permission for the administration of the district to realign staff in the eighteen nineteen school district year based on the items that are listed.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion?
Yes, I have a question. Have these moves been made already?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two seventy-six, which is the approval of the resignations that are listed. And as noted, Executive Mandy Holt is added to the agenda from last week. She is the senior high school guidance secretary and she is hoping to retire as of July twenty-sixth. And we certainly appreciate much service.
Second. Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two seventy-seven, which is the approval of the on-the-road driver education instructors for the eighteen nineteen school year.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two seventy-eight, which is the approval of the teacher of the year positions and salaries for the eighteen nineteen school year.
Second.
Motion on floor and second, questions on motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make the board aware, whether you know it or not, that the total cost for the teacher leader positions is fifty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Uh, I do think that, well, I, I, I think that these leaders give, uh, give our students and fellow teachers guidance.
Any other?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, and I would just concur, uh, they step up and do a wonderful job, um, in, um, recognizing the role as a teacher leader for colleagues in classrooms and in the buildings, thank you.
Any other questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two seventy-nine, which is the approval of the support personnel appointments that are classified listed.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two eighty, which is the approval of the support personnel appointment supplemental positions and salaries for the eighteen-nineteen school year and they are attached as A and B.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions on motion?
Yes, I, I have a comment for the, uh, student activities and advisors, it's gonna cost the school district eighty-three thousand five hundred thirty dollars. Again, uh, the only thing, the only question that I have, uh, is that I, I've noticed that there are some personnel that are on their twice. When I say on their twice, they're taken care of two, two different positions. And man, that's why that is.
For the, for the most part, they've applied, um, the most, usually no one else has interest in being in that position, um, and so therefore, as long as they can manage the time, they can do two positions, um, speaking of clubs and advisors and those types of positions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
You know, I, I'm sorry, I did have a question on the, uh, the, the fall sports coaches. Uh, I wanted to know if the participation for the fall is, is gonna be up or not?
You mean student participation?
Students might, yeah, participate.
Yeah, I would have to ask Mr. Neers to, to do that report on basis after the physicals.
And the only reason I, I bring it up is because the fall, uh, sports coaches is gonna cost the school district kind of forty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars, that's a lot of money. And if participation in the football is, is not going to be, uh, what it was the year before or the year before, are we looking at, uh, maybe kind of coaches? I also, uh, I also saw where we were paying, uh, the weight room, cabinet, nine thousand dollars and also there's assistant, maybe four thousand dollars and also there is a fall sports, uh, reporting.
Reporting.
Okay, uh, with the, uh, new position of the assistant athletic director, we weren't able to, like, okay.
If I can, sure, please, I was on the athletic community, if I can, uh, because of the number of different sports we have in the fall, that are, many of them are going at the same time in different locations, we need multiple people to be able to be in those things. As far as the weight room goes, one of the, one of the nice benefits we provide for our students is we have two weight room facilities, one of which is available to any student who's, who, they don't have to be involved in the school sport and, and I can tell you from first in experience that that locker room will have twenty-five or fifty kids depending upon the weather after school who aren't in any sport, but who wanna exercise. And so we need to have somebody down there to supervise that room. So that room is open a hundred-and-eighty days out of the year for like, you know, three hours after school. So, uh, it has to be, may have to be supervised, uh, and again, it's not, not just a focus for our athletic teams, this is for the general student body. So if they wanna stay after school and exercise, they can go down, they'll, they'll put the weight room and exercise.
Thank you. I have one more question, uh, the, it actually, every, every year, you actually, uh, do the, the, the new coaching schedule or, or the salaries, is that a one-year position?
Yes.
Okay, so these coaches are expected to, to not only be there for the season, but to be there for, you know, agility drills, how, how many's football as an example?
That is at the coach's direction, they choose to do that. Uh, I would also know that the number of coaches and you referenced the number of participants in each sport, um, I, I know that, um, there is, in the G L B A contract, um, an agreement as to the number of students and how these points are, are met. However, um, for any type of trend in, in involvement in the sport, I, I would think that Mr. Neers would want to see a consistent number of years where it's lower, because as we know, um, some sports become more popular one year and less the next. But clearly, I think you're referencing that there is a continual trend on less, uh, participants over a period of years, your number of coaches that might be needed certainly might, um, be a direct relation to that, um, and I would have to have Mr. Neers speak to the number of participants in those sports every year, so everybody will be able to give you that, I think.
And, and Mr. Porter, in terms of the, uh, agility programs, that's the responsibility of the head coach, he creates a schedule with his assistants, so not every assistant has to be there every time, for example, like during the summer or what have you, he organizes the schedule so that everything is proper. Thank you.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two eighty-one, um, which is the approval of the summer athletic department intern, in this case, Hunter Frosty from Mount Vernon University.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two eighty-two, which is the approval of the food service dietetic interns, there are two, Rachel Howard and Evangeline Sika from Seaton National University.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number two eighty-three, which is the approval of the classified personnel hourly rates of pay effective July first, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second.
Second.
Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes.
As Mr. Hauser mentioned, I believe there is no board meeting that will be held in July, our meetings in August are the fourteenth and the twenty-first. I'd also like to note, um, that tonight is Dr. Soltes's last board meeting, that the Gray LaPrey School District, she is looking to retire, um, at the end of June, so, uh, July, we wish her well and we thank her for her service and there is cake, um, available for everyone, um, during the audience, please make sure you get a piece, um, it is, uh, just a celebration of Dr. Soltes's service, so congratulations and thank you, Dr. Soltes, very much for your service.
You're welcome and I just wanted to say it would be very, would have been a very challenging job, I mean, it is, but without the support of our superintendent and having a great team, you know, from, um, flight and all the way to transportation, it's been, it's, I've heard horror stories of what some of my colleagues have had together and it's just been great and I appreciate having the support of the principals and the teachers, so thank you, you're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. At this time, we'll, we'll open the podium up to hearing visitors, part two, this is where anyone from the audience may come forward with any concern they have, please state your name, address, when you step up to the podium, there's a five-minute limit.
Great meeting, Ben. Um, I was gonna bring up some stuff, a lot of, uh, right to know, I feel, a few years ago, and, in fact, it was April sixteenth, and I guess I'm, what I'm gonna do is ask for a meeting with some people, I'll discuss it, not right now, uh, I just feel, I'm gonna tell you where I'm coming from quickly, I just feel some things in that right to know that I was given are not true and, uh, I wanna get the bottom of it because I don't, if I'm being lied to, I'm not gonna do today. Uh, so, I, I mean, I understand you guys don't meet in July, so I'm fine, sometime August or whenever, uh, with that, you know, if you wanna set this up, uh, anybody's welcome to be there, but two people I'd love to be there is Mr. Watson, Mr. Oz, I would almost need them to be there for this. And the only other comment I wanna make too, and hopefully Mr. Palmer doesn't get mad because he's heard this before, a couple of years ago, we were gonna tear the L E S down, make it a community center. What a win-win for all of us that it was sold for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We didn't spend the one-point-one-two-seven million dollars we were gonna spend on it to convert it into a community center and the fact that I hear the buyer of the building is gonna be extremely generous and save the auditorium and the gymnasium and everything and let people use it. I mean, that, that was such a win-win and, you know, I know when I brought that up a couple of years ago, a lot of you people were pissed at me, a lot of yous were not happy, but what would happen? What would happen? It's a one-point-six-million-dollar turnaround for our school district and so sometimes, you, you know, when I stand here, I feel like you guys look at me like, "I'm a worthy of your time, well, I'm a taxpayer," and anytime, I, I'm glad I come here, I wish it sold, everybody would come here.
We do too, right?
Because there's more people that feel the way I do than not, but they don't know what's going on because they're not involved.
I know.
Okay.
And without being here anymore.
Right, and I'm, and I'm involved.
And it's not a problem.
And it shouldn't upset you people when I ask them, I mean, I have a lot more stuff coming, I'm working on stuff and I said before, when I ask questions, I'm ninety-nine-point-nine percent sure I'm right, 'cause I'm not gonna make an ass of myself standing up here either.
We heard two times a sudden, man, two times a week.
Well, I work shifts, so it's, you know.
It, it doesn't matter, you can get somebody else to come and say, "Okay, break in, keep here, here's what you're sloting."
But I won't take secondhand information, I won't hear my second, because that's how stuff gets, well, not a proportion also, so, so, hook me up with that and we'll, uh, go on that, thank you.
Anybody else? I move for adoption resolution number two eighty-four, Jeremy.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?